I call the order of regular meeting in the common council for December 18th, 2024. Please have a roll call.
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Van Der Heiden.
Present.
Councilmember John Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Present.
Councilmember Vince Hellman.
Present.
Councilmember Paul Loride.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Eckery.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mundy.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Kabor.
Here.
Clerk-Treasurer Kirsten Keneese.
Present.
In order to have a forum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is the majority, therefore there is a forum for this meeting.
Thank you. Come on, please just take a moment to make personal reflection. Thanks and with all their April, please stand and join our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes were sent out. additions, pro shops.
There was two corrections. I changed under ordinance number 2024-18, motion thirty should be five to two, and also it should have said redevelopment commission, not conditions, so I made those changes.
That's at the bottom page, one of the minutes.
See no other corrections than those that were made, Mayor, on the motion to approve the minutes from last month?
We have a motion from Paul.
I'll second that motion.
And a second from Nancy. Any further discussion? All in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This evening, we're having the privilege of having the Parks Department give us an update. You know, Tom couldn't wait, he was trying to give us an update before. I just want to lead off, but Tom has been on board here for a few years now, and I think the Parks has really done a wonderful job, Jasper, buying the amenities and keeping them maintained, and it's a big focus, taking care of the existing amenities, so, Tom, congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council. I have your handouts here, and I've got a slideshow. So, we're going to start by going over the handouts that I gave you. The first sheet is the golf course. I've highlighted the appropriate things there. Pro shop is basically green fees and things are done at the pro shop. We separated out the driving range, as it was new this year. So you can see our totals there, eight hundred fifty-two thousand for the pro shop and seventy-seven thousand at the driving range. Last year, just a comparison, 2023, eight hundred thirty-eight thousand was our total for the year, so, pro shop beat that pretty clearly, and then adding the range on top was a great addition for us. We figured somewhere around sixty-five thousand a break even on the driving range, so we feel like we've covered that. Also on there, rounds played, twenty-five thousand five hundred thirty-eight compared to twenty-five thousand two hundred fifty last year. And I gotta tell you, that's about as many rounds as you're going to get when you deal with weather and what we have, that is, that's a phenomenal number, you go through that little itty bitty pro shop, so. Page two is the Hobbie Center. Again, I've highlighted the total for the year, this does not include December, none of these are going to include December's numbers, as we are in December. But thirty thousand six hundred and twelve visitors to the Hobbie Center, up from twenty-five thousand eight seventy-nine last year, as you can go down there, going back to 2010, thirty thousand is a record to begin at the Hobbie Center, so Kerry's done a fabulous job there and...
Without December.
Without December, without December.
Oh, my God, capacity too.
Oh, absolutely, so, she's done a great job there and we're just thrilled with the way that's gone.
That's with the current parking lot?
Yes, well, we added twelve, we did add twelve spots this year, so next year we'll add the rest down below, so.
So that's, that must be the reason for the difference.
Tom, you only added twelve spots?
Just this year. Next year, we're adding more down below, yeah. But, so sixty-six is what we had, then we added twelve more. In December, we had a hundred and four at Catered Mill. You can see it's, we're...
The other point, Tom, I think, is you've looked at expanded hours of programming.
Absolutely.
For hours a day, so, you know, it's just not limited to late night, mid-afternoon, it's...
Yeah, so...
Programming now, but scheduling really accommodate for capacity.
So, to your point, Mayor, when, you know, we're there seven-thirty before, we've expanded beyond that, so before we come in, we have some exercise classes happening, after we're gone, Saturdays and Sundays, we have other activities, so kudos to Kerry for expanding that too, so. The next sheet is participant count, and this is for summer activities, and this goes back to 2022. If you notice down at the bottom where the blacked-out versions are from '22 and '23, it's because we didn't offer those things, and Janessa did a fabulous job this year increasing activities without a pool. They had some other things that we needed to do. Not having the pool did hurt some of her activities, because kids go to the pool after the activities, and so we lost some there, but all in all, a great, great year there. We added Central Green onto this account now, two hundred fifty-five kids through Central Green at Halloween at Central Green this year, which Ms. Mayor will tell you, it was hectic from beginning to end, which is a great thing. It's a wonderful program, Janessa does a great job there as well. Pooch's Playground, just kind of briefly touch on some of these here, but holding steady, seventy-six members, we had eighty-seven last year. We added some amenities, so we're pleased with the progress of that, it's a nice addition to the Parks Department, having Pooch's Playground. Rentable Facilities Report, Parklands is always the big one there in the train depot. Rookser Clubhouse is getting some notoriety now, we've had some rentals that people have had people come in with, you know, to do flowers or catering and stuff, and are aware of the venue now, and they're going to specify that, so. Spirit of Jasper Train, this is always a good one for us as a city to look at tourism. It's not about what we make in the Parks Department on the train, but having all those people come in, spend the night, shop, you know, and visit. Two thousand two hundred eighty-eight tickets sold out of two thousand four hundred twenty that were available to sell. Eighty-one point six percent are all out of county on those riders, that's a fabulous number. Again, that's just bringing people to the city and allowing them to see what we have to offer here. The last page, last thing in your packet, if you go to the last page on there, that's really where the members that I'll talk about, and then I'll move on. So, so far, again, this does not include December, sixteen thousand five hundred eighty-three folks have either been on the train or done tours with the schoolhouse, Schaefer Barn, the mill, and the train. That number is up from twelve thousand six eighty-one last year, and the previous year was one thousand ninety-nine. Now, to, part of that number is, we weren't tracking the mill in '22, so those numbers are a little skewed, but Dana's done a fabulous job with programming, she's reached out to schools, we've had a number of schools from around coming and going through these things. She does a great job with, she got turkey feathers, I mean, not processed turkey feathers, but real turkey feathers, and she made ink out of walnuts, and the kids all signed their names with turkey feathers and walnut ink onto cards. She's even got home schooled kids coming in, so all of those wonderful assets that we have for tourism are all being utilized pretty wonderfully, so. Okay, now, if I can direct your attention to the screen behind you. Got our 2024, just some pictures of things that we've done. Solar Eclipse was a big thing that we haven't experienced before, this is all at the Parklands, which I think was the highest concentration of people. It was a great event, it was pretty spectacular, actually. Now, lots of people from all around the United States came, so a lot of people, hey, I'd love to live in Jasper, you know, it's, it was a, it was a good event. Annual Tree Giveaway, St. Doug's Two Thousand helps us with this, always a big success getting those trees out, and our staff does a great job getting them ready to go and out the door. Breakfast and Lunch with JPD and JFD, so we had Detectives and Donuts Camp for Kids on the left there, and then the others were the Fire Department grilling with them, I think they had close to seventy kids at the Fire Department one, so, big success. We did get the mill deck replaced, if you recall, that was wooden, and that stays wet constantly, as you can see there on the concrete. We spent a little extra money and went with concrete, so we wouldn't have to do this again in ten years. Also, if you look at the other two pictures, we've replaced some of the landscaping around the mill, and our guys in the Parks Department did that, turned out very nice. This is the bridge north of the labyrinth, if you recall, we've got a number of bridges on the Riverwalk that need attention, this one is right at the curve of that, of the water coming in, where that rip rack is, that's right at the bend, and that water comes in and has been eating away at that, that bank, so that got repaired and did a great job, and hopefully we don't have to visit that one, we'll move on to the next bridge next year. Ribbon Cutting at Beeler Park, I could not be more pleased with the turnout at Beeler Park, the pickleball court's that shelter, we're trying out rubber mulch here, see how this will go, had a good showing at the ribbon cutting, and Mayor's Youth Leadership Council is also working on a sand volleyball court there. If you know, we have league play at Boner Park, and a lot of kids, high school kids want to come and play sand volleyball, happens to be the same time, and they really don't have another place to go, so we'll put a single court there. We replaced a bunch of basketball goals this year, they've been all a little rough, so Boner Park got four new ones, and Church Avenue got two new ones, and next year we're looking at doing Gutzweiler, and that should be the remainder of them. Beeler got replaced when, when we redid Beeler. New park vehicles, Matt's was, the one on the left, I do believe was a two thousand and three truck, so he was overdue on that, and another one Janessa uses for her activities.
Tom, pardon me.
Yes, sir.
Where all were goals replaced?
Where? All four at Boner, two at Church, Beeler, we did two when we did that process, we replaced the one because of damage, and then thought, oh, boy, you know, one new one and one older one, so we replaced that one. So Gutzweiler's the last park that we'll need to replace goals on.
And are all of those at ten-foot?
Yes, yes. This is down at Dave Beeler Plaza, we've got the cornhole boards down there, they're concrete cornhole boards. Our cornhole league plays at the pool, well, if you know what the pool looks like right now, there's no place for them to play, they actually did league down there this year, and that turned out great, I think that works out wonderful for the, when the activity's done at Heart of Jasper, has the downtown chow down, down there. We did the ribbon cutting in the driving range, it's a great turnout for that, it's a horribly miserable day, but, you know, forty mile an hour winds and rain and cold, but big turnout, and it was, is a good kickoff for that, and that was in April. There's a new section of the concrete at the Hobbie Center, twelve new spots, they did a great job with that, they battled leaves while trimming that down, and, but it's, it's been a big help. This is whole ten fairway on the left, all the Bermuda grass was taken up and zoysia was put down, the Bermuda that was taken up was all sod cut, and we brought that over to Schrader, and the Bermuda field at Schrader got redone with the sod from the golf course. Very proud of that effort from our crew, golf course and the Parks Department, and actually Jasper Youth Soccer Group helped immensely with that, getting that replaced, it was good reuse of all that sod, and that's a huge difference on ten fairway. To the right, you see the sand, you see that's fourteen green, that got leveled out, if you've ever played out there and been on fourteen green, set a five putts from the front of the green, that'll be flat now, but they sod cut the bent grass, that's in the bottom picture, and put it all back down, and that'll be open for play next year, so very proud of them for that as well. We did the control burn at the Parklands, very neat experience, this should help replenish our native wildflowers that we have there, they were starting to dwindle in the, their blooms, and the control burn is the best way of doing that, it's been six years since it's been planted, this also gets rid of some of the invasive species that are there and allows the thatch to be consumed and the seed to actually reach the ground, so...
How often would that control burn?
Every four, five, six years, so we're very pleased with it, it's a neat experience, Fire Department helped out with that, and it was a, is a good experience for us all.
Didn't get any complaints.
Amen. That's the best part. And then, these are the latest pictures of the pool from last Tuesday, if you can see the top picture on the left-hand side, that is concession stand and admissions on the top part, the bottom part of it is the, are the bathhouses, and the building on the far right is the maintenance building, and you can see my, you know, okay. Bottom left picture, the left-hand side is where admissions is, that's where you'll go in, and then to the breeze way there is where you're, you will enter the pool, and then again to the right is the bathhouse. Lower right hand, and you can see the current channel on the left, and the deep end, and then the far right is the slide runout.
How deep is the deep end?
It's about thirteen feet, it's because we've got a three-meter diving board and platform, a lot of people, a little misnomer, people say you can't have a high dive because it was dangerous of the water depth, which is true, but it was the ladder going up, this has, this lot of stairway going up versus a ladder, so. Other park projects, got a couple new park mowers to boat at the driving range, side-by-side at the Parklands, new scoreboards at E Sports Complex, and we also got one at Men's Softball Field, Schrader Complex, as I mentioned, was with the playing surface on the Bermuda grass, and Parklands drainage, there were a lot of places out at the Parklands where water was coming across the trail, and it got unsafe getting into the winter months, so all of those places have been rectified, and hopefully we'll, we'll be, have a safe winter, and that is what I have for you all.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Great presentation, Tom.
We have a tremendous crew and very proud of all of them, great to be a part of it, and thanks for letting me do what I do.
Thanks for finally being here.
Thank you.
You've actually been here, but we wouldn't let you...
Sorry.
Quick question on the, well, on the mind, the Parklands, do we look at or measure from time to time, is there any concern on the under of fuel load, maybe that's in the woods, I think that goes to the, basically?
We do a pretty good job maintaining all of downed trees and things like that, but I know what you're getting at with that. We have a group that comes out of Knox County that actually does that prairie block for us, and they do a pretty good survey of the entire Parklands and keeps all that, I guess, monitored for us, and I'm glad you brought that back up, because I almost forgot to let everyone know that we passed our final inspection of the wetlands at the Parklands, so we're released from RQAW, I didn't just ask him to do the, look, review the report, but that was, that's been a long battle, so, three years in a row passing it. RQAW, Joe Datkowski who was here yesterday stated, he said, "I will tell you that it is the nicest wetlands in Indiana," so we'll, we'll take that. Absolutely, and we're talking about putting some signage up there around the boardwalk that goes across, people think it's just a swamp there, but maybe a QR code or two on there to identify some of the species that we have in there, so.
And I know that shifting gears a little bit on the archery range, I know we missed our first, our initial goal, what is our new expectation for finishing that?
So, we just had some delays because of insurance reasons, Phyllis McKnight has not done an archery range, they've got a lot of things for us, so we have to kind of go back, add some things to the archery range, it's, it'll be totally enclosed, and we'll do, end up doing a membership, but much like Pooch's Playground, we'll probably do like a twenty-five dollars a year kind of a thing, and have a waiver that, that needs to be signed as a part of that, a fence entirely around it, a way to get in, so we're going to re-approach that in January to ask to go and get rebids on that, because some of those parameters have changed, so hopefully in February then we'll, we'll accept a bid.
Leave it to those insurance companies.
Well, and I get it, I mean, they haven't done it before, so...
But I think, I think Chad was still in the process of getting a permitting, because of the fence.
And because of there being a fence down there, we'll have to get some permitting by DNR, but I've given that information to Chad, so it's basically just saying where that fence is going to be.
And the type of fence.
And the type of fence.
I would say that that would be your biggest, not, not an obstacle, as in we can't get it, but...
Time-wise.
Time-wise perspective, we have to get approval, so...
And if you go down there now to Rookser, with all this rain that we've had, we've got the archery range in a really nice spot, because there's water, you know, I think a moat around it is a really neat idea, but, because we've got that now, but...
To kind of piggyback off of his, I know your son's working on that Eagle Scout project for that, so would there be a limitation, and I know you gave us that great archery lesson a couple of years ago, which was great, is there a limitation on, I don't know the terminology for it, like how strong...
Poundage.
...of item that you could use there?
So, type of bow, we, we will not do crossbows at first, insurance looked at that and said, you might want to, you know, not do that, or else, you know, that, that'll be out, so, but poundage is, eighty-pound bow is plenty good, kind of a thing.
I might like to talk to the insurance agent, I mean, that was really the impetus for all of this, you know, crossbows.
You're thinking eighty-pound is just like nothing?
Eighty pounds?
No, no.
That's too much.
He's saying the exclusion.
The exclusion of crossbow.
Yeah, the, the exclusion of crossbows, that's, it's a disappointment that I hear that.
They also were going to, this will be a, and then a, okay, they were going to say no broadheads, but we said that we would do a broadhead season, so if we said August to November, we do broadheads in that range, they said, okay, we can do that.
They got those really nice sand pits.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, so the, the broadhead boxes are fabulous, we can't wait to get them put in, that's what I say it did.
And fencing would be able to stop something from going farther along, it wouldn't be like a chain link fence.
It'll be, it'll be chain link on two sides, and then a dog-eared wood fence on the other sides, chain link just to keep people out unless you're a member, so, and we want to keep water flow in and out, if we couldn't do wooden all the way around, or else we would hate to restrict water flow.
It's always a little more complicated than everything.
It is, but hey.
Keep moving forward.
Challenges become opportunities, right?
Being all that this is for carp fishing.
Yeah, that's right.
Future indication of carp fishing, or bow fishing.
You can do that down there right now, I think. All right, well, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, next on the agenda is the ordinance number 2024-27, it's an ordinance amending unified development ordinance for the city of Jasper and its jurisdictional area. Could I have a motion to have this, the ordinance read on the first reading in full or by title?
How many votes have you?
Read by title only.
Have a motion for best read by title only?
Second.
Second for the cabinet. All in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Attorney, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance number 2024-27, an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance for the city of Jasper, Indiana and its jurisdictional area.
Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading? Number? Paul?
I'll second.
Second for Chad. For the discussion.
Do you want to do a summary?
That would be great, that sounds great, I mean, we received a lot of material on it, but it'd still be nice to maybe point out some of the highlights.
Sure. Morning, councilor, afternoon, council, evening, whatever, wherever we are today. These are UDO updates that have been presented to the Planning Commission for the last three consecutive months, they've been discussed since, first two months were just an open dialogue about what we would like to see, and, and there were some things that did make the cut, some things that did make the cut, and then, of course, they were approved at the last meeting. There were some clerical changes, there were some definition changes, but I want to hit probably the top six things that are referenced in there. First one being R2 permitted uses, considering moving dwelling to family, which is a duplex, from a special exception to a permitted use, and what this would allow is future developers, instead of coming for variance, to ask to put more density in their housing, they by right would be able to put a duplex in that future development. Now, most of our developments here in the area, as far as R2, already in their covenants that were done and established when they plotted the neighborhood, that was all, most of those already limit to single-family homes only, so what this is affecting is not really moving forward into established neighborhoods, it's, it allows and is allowing for future development to include duplexes by right. The next item, and I apologize, I'm going off of my list, not necessarily your list, so if I'm bouncing around a little bit, I apologize, the next item we intended to look at was anytime you're building something, putting a fence, an accessory structure, whatever the case may be, within five feet of an, of an assumed property line, we're asking that minimum they get the two corners that are affected staked by a surveyor. What has happened multiple times, but certainly once in, in my tenure here, is we've had people who built things based on assumes, assumed lines, and when they go to sell their home, find out that their, their fences across the line, their decks across the line, their spas across the line, and so they have to go back and effectively rip that out and whatever. So it's just being a little bit more proactive, before we'll issue a permit for a fence or a building, they have to have that staked, and Adam will go out and verify that it falls within two feet of that, or else we get out of conversation.
Either that or you'll be closer within your property.
Absolutely, yeah, correct, so to that point, it's, it's if you want to be that close, you get approved to say you're not across the line. The next item we've got is referencing parking at our multifamily places, so our apartment buildings, anything that's three units or more, we originally had said that you had to have two parking spaces for every unit, and then a different count for three bedrooms or more, this is saying it's reducing that number to one point five per unit, and then instead of going from three bedrooms, if you have two bedrooms or more, it adds an additional parking space requirement. So again, what it's, what it's doing is it's more right sizing our parking lots and not being so heavy-handed on requiring parking, this, this change is in line with what best practices are saying nationally, of people rolling back parking. of people rolling back parking max or minimums, excuse me. This is just a start, and starting at multifamily was amazing, wanted to start.
Josh, I wanted to ask about that real quick.
Please.
So a two-bedroom unit will now only have 1.5 spaces to park?
That's correct. That falls in line, so I spoke to Kirstens, who's our largest holder of rental properties. I spoke with Brosmer Land Surveying. They both worked outside of the Jasper market, and these are things that are seen, you know. Again, the trend is moving that way nationally, but Ruger estimated that 1.5 for all of their developments would be a sufficient number for them to have enough parking. On a two-bedroom unit, what they're seeing, a large percentage of their people, I'm not going to say it's the majority, are people using the office as a second one. So they're not necessarily, it could be a couple. But when you talk about two bedrooms, not necessarily multiple, multiple people having multiple cars, and they thought that the 1.5 would be sufficient for that.
Seems tight. That's all, I was talking to Paul, I called Paul about this. Because I just remember, you know, when I lived in an apartment in Evansville, it was always tough to get a parking space. And that last night I drove over to University Heights, and they were almost all full. So I don't know if that's.
I believe, and I would have to double-check because I don't recall what we did at University Heights, but I believe they got a variance for a lesser number than what just standard was.
That was one.
That's why.
It's very, very answered that one, I don't know. This was a studio apartment.
Yeah.
On those, it was a one-on-one.
Thank you.
In there, and we had a few.
One parking spot to one bedroom?
One bed, one parking spot and one bedroom, which was what those guys typically are. And then we had a few bonus spots in there for visitors or whatever. So I mean, about two people living in it, but the sum of it's about a studio of 450 square foot.
I usually had a roommate, so we had two cars. I just think two bedrooms and not two spaces might get a little tight. That's all, but they ought to know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, truly, it's on the developer really to know what their, you know, their needs are before they go that, and again, I bounced off of that.
So this would just be a minimum, they could put more if they were.
Absolutely. Any other questions about that one?
I wish that was probably one of them that I had thoughts about also.
Yep. Next item talks about site visibility triangle. Site visibility triangle, I'm going to make an assumption that everybody's aware of what the site visibility triangle is. In the B2 district specifically, so area around our downtown, that was flatly exempted from being. Enforced, thank you. As far as the site visibility requirements are go. What this change is doing is it's just separating a little bit the nuance of it. It says that still in the B2 district, the building can exist in the site triangle. You can build in the site triangle, much as any of the buildings down here in the square. Those are all built, you know, right up to the edge of the property line at a zero-foot setback in what we would consider the site visibility triangle. It's saying anything else, landscaping, signs, landscaping is probably the biggest one, that if your building is set back and you're not in the site visibility triangle, you can't put anything else that's not a building in that site triangle for visibility and safety. What we have in some areas around here is people let bushes and whatnot go and basically just creates a barrier that drivers can't see when they're entering onto 231. So questions about that?
So this still allows for, you know, construction, the building is right into the site triangle?
Yep.
Is there a newer instance of seeing this? I mean, obviously older buildings I can see, but is there a newer example?
No, but let's make an example. So GAB owns the parking lot right adjacent to Illusions and to Cal John's building. If they wanted to build a building in a B2 district, I believe the setback is zero feet, they could build a building on that corner at a zero-foot setback, which by definition in the site triangle, changes in size depending on the road that abuts it, based on the traffic count and the size, or how we categorize it as major arterial, minor arterial, collector road, et cetera. Changes the length or distance from the corner as your starting point. So being right on 231, that's a major arterial, have the largest length, I believe that's 35 feet. So by the time you draw a triangle from 35 feet off of that section, and then I'm going to guess 25 feet off of Seventh Street, then you've got a pretty good chunk. By B2, as it stands now, they can build their building in that zone. What we're asking for, because the rules say that B2 is not enforced at all for anything in the side triangle, we're saying that if GAB decided, you know, "We want to keep our parking lot, but we want to put a tree there or some shrubs," they could, as long as it meets the site visibility triangle, which is going to tell you that you can only be up to, I believe, 30 inches tall in that site visibility triangle, because anything taller than that now is creating a safety issue. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah.
Yeah.
Can are those ever any there, is that kind of grandfathered?
Yes. Landscaping is a tricky one. I would argue that plants grow all the time, so I would enforce this on landscaping moving forward. I would say the rule says that you can be up to, see the 30, 36, I apologize. I believe it's 30 inches. Thank you. I would just say, "Hey, this is the rule, you need to trim your shrubs down a little bit." I'm not saying you got to get rid of them, they can exist. We're just saying that if it's not a building, it shouldn't be in the site visibility triangle.
Nancy, we do currently enforce that. I mean, if we get complaints about visibility issues, we reach out to the. There's some areas, it's difficult to see.
Absolutely, yeah.
We had one several years back, if you remember, you know, you called Bender and now on that street there, the department big box trucks out in the corner, where you couldn't see around them, coming into an area that was getting, there weren't four lanes out. Two, three. So just kind of help to clean up.
Yeah.
Clean up a little bit of that, which makes it a whole easier to enforce.
And safe.
That's it.
The, let's see. Yeah, another item, again, talking about how we can kind of corral parking. Parking, again, is trending less and less. Anybody can drive out to the Walmart Supercenter and see that 80% of that land is not being used currently, right? It is, you know, it's not developing any economic tax base. It's really just a waste of space. What this is attempting to do, and this is, I'll be truthful, this is probably phase one of what you're going to continue to hear me talking about, parking minimums and being softer on parking minimums because it's just the way things are trending. But what this is, this is the first step at that and saying, if by definition, a new development or a new commercial center requires more than 100 parking spaces, they can ask me, without going through a variance process, to reduce that number by up to 25%. So case in point, the new pool just got approved. I believe their parking requirement was 140 or thereabouts was what they needed by definition, based on the things they had going on. They came in ultimately and asked for a variance, and I think we settled at 109 or 119 is what they asked for and received. That development, because it was more than the new rule of pass, that development, because it's more than 100 square, excuse me, 100 parking spaces, could have come to us and said, "Hey, we did a traffic count, and our normal load on any given day," this is a true thing, they did this last couple of months of pool being open, "we only utilized 46 parking spaces across the whole thing. So we don't think that 140 spaces is really a smart move for us. We'd like to reduce that by up to 25%." We would have a meeting, we would discuss it, they would present, "Hey, my normal load is 46 parking spaces on any given time." That makes sense. From a commercial aspect, it's really weighing, you know, they don't want to put out the extra cost for extra parking, but they also have to account for enough parking for their commercial space, right? So it's a little bit beholden on the developer to kind of present to us, the city, what that right sizing of their needs are, either based on historical evidence that they have or just having a conversation about what makes sense based on their perceived need. If they didn't have enough parking, then they're not going to have successful stores and they're not going to have renters, so it's not in their economic interest to have no parking. The caveat to that, I would say, is B2 zones, as everybody's sitting here talking about parking, there are no parking minimums down here in the downtown. So that wouldn't be a good example.
Getting back to the pool, I'd deprive people, produce to make sure you have a driveway lane to drop kids on.
Sure.
Well, in theory, really in regards to a pool, it's kind of hard to compare the old pool to what the new pool is too, so you don't know.
Sure, but that being said, I don't think we're going to have a three X factor of new parking also, just because we have some new amenities. I agree, we're going to have some increased traffic, I hope at least, but.
So the later, when we were talking about Kmart parking lot, the German Town, the Walmer, Northridge Center on there, we built it for Black Friday. There's 364 of the days a year.
Well, and even Black Friday's not Black Friday anymore.
Right, don't take over that, the buying trends have changed with Amazon, home delivery. It's not like it used to be.
Absolutely.
So Josh, you're saying that no longer would a business need a variance for this? They could have a conversation about it.
Yeah.
Pre-meeting.
With administrative approval through my department, yeah. We could just move that as part of the building permitting process, so.
Makes sense.
On session 10, I must be reading this wrong, if you have, and I'm looking at it before now, if you have a three-bedroom unit, it's going to require two spaces, right?
Let me get seconded.
So in my eyes, it looks like it's actually going up, it's not down on the three-bedroom, because three-bedroom, it says, requires, it used to require two spaces per dwelling. And on the new change, it requires 1.5 spaces per dwelling, plus one space for each bedroom over two, which would add one more to it. So on a three-bedroom, you'd go from two to two and a half spaces, right?
That's correct, yeah, and that was kind of the check and balance that the Planning Commission discussed. You know, you're correct, if we're going to have these larger units, then it should be, it should have a greater amount of parking required. So they lowered that threshold. So again, going back to the two units or, excuse me, the two bedrooms are smaller or really the largest need we have as far as rental units is single bedrooms and two bedrooms for people who want offices. What this was saying was, we didn't start counting units until it was over three. So that'd be a four-bedroom unit, which would have caught the extra one. Now, we've lowered the threshold to us two, so. Some examples, yes, it'll be more, some examples it'll be less.
So depending on its mix, it could actually go up?
Hypothetically.
I just look, play with the math, I don't think they're, I'm not thinking of their mix.
Yeah. That was a discussion we had at the Planning Commission early on, and that was one of the recommendations they wanted. They wanted to lower that threshold, so when it was bigger units, so to Vince's, you know, shared roommate situation or whatever, there would be a bigger requirement for those.
For a larger apartment, family, kids, which did the driving, that was part of the conversation as well.
Could be, but not as many drivers, depending on the age of the children. And Josh, I'm interested in anything about the solar panel and that part of this.
Yep, can I finish one other item? So the other item that's not, or the only other item I would talk about is we talked about blade air projecting signs, and what we had found was that we permit projecting signs, which is essentially a sign that's for, for what, we're basically going to say it's 90 degrees off the building, so it sticks out off the building. There was a disconnect, because there's also a rule in our municipal code that says if you have a projecting sign that's over a sidewalk or anything else that's encroaching into the public right of way, you have to come to the Board of Public Works and get permission from them to encroach in the public way. The disconnect was that these two rules existed in their own realm and nobody had really connected to them, and this just says, "Hey, if you're going to do this and get a sign permit, you also have to do this as another step and get permission from the Board of Public Works." So any questions about, what you got on solar needs?
Just explaining what all this entails about solar.
Sure, at a high level, and we can get granular in any specific you want, but at a high level, it recognizes that solar panels, whether it's on your roof or in your yard, is an accessory structure. And so that means it put it up, any accessory structure that's built gets an improvement location permit, which, or a building permit, whatever you want to call it, which is the same as a fence or a house or a shed. So first, it puts them in that category as being an accessory structure. Then it talks a little bit about nuances of, if it's on a roof, there's a little bit of rules that are around that. We had a healthy discussion about what that looked like. There were several members who were very engaged, and some of the rules that came out of there are specific to, and I'm going to butcher this, but it's quoted in there. There is a policy standard for firefighting, and some of these rules specific to that basically are talking about how firefighters with solar panels on roofs, the minimum distances they need from edges to be able to get around to safely fight those fires. Another item that's in there, it talks about it being, really, it tries to go into aesthetics and try to not put things in a box per se, but have some order of what they're going to do. If they're going to leave their, if they're going to have panels that are parallel to their roof face, they can't be farther than 10 inches off the roof. Can't be, can't cause glare into traffic, just some really common sense things. You know, we, I think we talked about solar at the end of last year. It just wasn't, everybody recognized that it was a need, that we needed to bring, you know, some kind of rules to our ordinance regarding them, because they are coming, and you know, we see it everywhere, that this is the, at least the next step in the future. So this was our first way of getting, you know, this on the books. Becky Mormon did an amazing job of researching what other locales in the state had done, and we've really kind of modeled that. This particular ordinance came from the IU Bloomington School. They had adopted a model ordinance, which set out some structure. And then it also talks about if you're not on the roof face, you're actually want a, you know, a panel in your yard. Again, it sets about setting the rules for that, not being, and not encroaching in the setback. Then it talks about a couple of things, maximum tilt and minimum tilt. And so those would probably be the most technical aspect of the ordinance. And what it's talking about maximum tilt would be at full perpendicular to the earth, straight up and down, so that's the maximum height that can be. And I believe 18 feet is what we've quote as being the maximum height that any panel could be. Then it talks about minimum tilt, which most filters don't necessarily go completely flat, but should it go completely flat, or whatever its minimum tilt is, it can encroach into the side setback.
But it's not disallowing, it's just allowing bonus restrictions.
Yeah, yeah, correct, we don't have any way of enforcing or allowing or anything right now. This is just putting around the broad strokes.
Number five, lot coverage, subpart deal says ground-mounted system shall not count towards the maximum number of accessory structures permitted. Does that, does that mean that somebody could like cover their whole lot with solar panels?
The, so let me see where you are, so I can read just the same thing.
Here's number five.
Part of what you said was regarding the number of accessory structures. They currently have a rule that says you can have no more than two accessory structures, so that's part of what that rule is. Sorry, you're on five.
Lot coverage, number two there.
Yeah, so you kind of have a two-part question. So two, yes, it doesn't count toward the maximum number of accessory structure permitted. They could have, they could have two sheds and a solar panel, or two solar panels or whatever. The two sheds are their accessory structures, the solar panels do not count.
As like six solar panels, I guess is what I'm getting at.
They could, so going, that goes up to the number one above it. Talks about lot coverage or whatever, and they're exempt from lot coverage. They could have that many, many panels. But it says.
Well, so if they.
Is there just a concern that somebody might say, "Hey, I'm just going to cover my whole lot with solar cones?"
Well, I think, so they could technically, if they didn't have like, say, a mount, a system that was mounted on like a pad. So can't, if you see, it says in that paragraph, it says, "If the soil under the collector is maintained in vegetation." So that's where the lot coverage.
Yep. Yeah, so if they maintain, traditionally people, I mean, you could have grass under it, certainly if you're in residential, but larger arrays that talk about not having compact soil and using vegetation, like clover or some other kind of. larger arrays that talk about not having compact soil and using vegetation, like clover or some other kind of greenery. So we're not, we're not, you know, if it's on a pad, then we're increasing stormwater runoff or just the other like. So, yes, a person could, I don't know if they're financially, you know, because they've really reduced what, can't really pay into the system anymore, or pump electricity into the system for a significant payback as much as you used to be able to. I don't know if the ROI would really exist to put six panels up there, because once you've established whatever your residential needs are, anything over that, you're gonna get a little bit payback if you, if you go through that process. And that's the other thing that the, that this ordinance does, is the utility department already has a process and mechanism and steps to go through. If people want to connect to their grid, if people want to attempt to sell back their power to IMPO, not to the city of Jasper. And there's also a requirement for maintaining a certificate of insurance, and that's an annual requirement that they, they're required. If you're gonna hook into our system, they have to provide certificate of insurance to keep that on file, so.
We do want Black Feed, get somebody out there with a bucket of storage, that's all you have, the man up switch, power goes off, you're gonna find another bucket truck working on something instead, and he's giving back energy to somebody's house. There's several things, I mean, again, this has been a multiple year conversation with the planning commission. The difference in a solar array, somebody wants to do it for commercial, commercial setup versus the home, we talked about this last week. The ones that I kept bringing up was the power wall, somebody wants a battery wall or battery bank, and you're gonna have to charge your car off of it. So if you put a panel to a wall, it's on there for you, you're charging your wall, and that's to the grid or not hooked to the grid. We talked about fire, so two panels that are just powering up this battery wall, how does a fire department know if your garage is on fire? Are they going there, the hose is blazing, and they're throwing this water into a melting, melting cell, probably because they have batteries that burn so hot and so long to pour out, is there a way we can get some kind of registry? We talked about that with utilities as well, is that if the mayor puts a battery wall in, you go in, Chad doesn't have one, he's just plugging his car into a power center on the house, and there can be dangers of one, these cars or ups or the battery motor ups. So I think we're still working on that to figure out what the best solutions were for that, and that will be voluntary, we've had to tell them what we've got to do.
Yeah, and so this ordinance was, you know, I talked to Chief Hokesang multiple times as we've gone through this, including right before we kind of rolled up the official, or the proposal, and he was pretty satisfied after, he did some searching and, you know, we had some conversations. Power wall aside, and well, to Paul's point, we haven't necessarily determined a registry per se, but at least it gives us some visibility of what homes and what units have these types of things going on. My, I'm not a firefighter or an electrician, but my cursory understanding of it, not talking about power walls, but solar arrays, is that one of the first things that the fire department comes in and does is they pull the meter off the electro, off the electrical grid. Doing that takes the rest of the system offline, so even though panels are on the home, by taking it off, it still has to have some kind of power in to, monitors that to keep itself active. Once they pull that, it should de-energize the system, as far as I understand. Power wall is the, you know, is the outlier, because to Paul's point, it's capturing all this energy and still has this energy. So if it's, if the power wall is hooked into the home, most are used to power your car now, but if someone powered that into their home, then we gotta figure out what de-energia, de-energia, de-energizing, what that looks like from the fire department, but at least they have some kind of knowledge going into it that this home may, you know, have solar connected.
And again, being a little, trying to be a little proactive, but we're really reacting, we've got several homes already in town.
Yeah.
Solar is up on, if some of them may, some of them may not conform to, I think you're gonna put a 30-inch perimeter around the edge of it, correct?
Yeah.
For firefighters to work up with that, before we talked about this, staggered, thought 30 would be safer, if you got a guy. So it's not fire cutters, or ones I see here, or more to bigger guys dragging hoes in bulky equipment up on that roof. Like you wanna reach down and grab onto a panel, that may not be active here.
Yeah, and the threshold there is amount of coverage, once you get more than 33% of your roof covered, then it's got a little bit more requirement on what you gotta provide to leave room for the firefighters to, you know, handle, be able to walk around your punch holes.
You got, you got an fire, you're just gonna think of the whole thing to get inside and do whatever.
Yeah.
It's tough to do until it's covered, temperature's mounted off the roof.
Yeah.
Who's you wanna go?
Happy to answer any of the questions, but that really is the big ones.
Okay, at this point, I have a motion to pause the second, Chad, there's no further discussion, all for the vote. All in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we'll bring that back.
This is the first reading.
Or just one reading.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing, and this is ordinance number 2024-29, ordinance appropriating additional money for the remainder of the year ending December 31st, 2024, this is advertised in the Herald on December 7th. This is a one reading, only procedure. Did I have, I'm gonna open up the public hearing, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this?
May I open the motion to pause the public hearing?
Motion from Nancy to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Second from Phil. All in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like a motion to be read, one reading only, please.
I have a motion from Ball, this ordinance be read, one reading only.
I'll second.
Second from Kevin. All in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do they have a motion to have the ordinance read in full or by title only?
Like a motion to be read by title only?
A motion from Ball, read by title only.
Second.
Second from John, all in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-29, by title.
Ordinance number 2024-29, an ordinance appropriating additional money for the city of Jasper, Indiana, for the remainder of the year ending December 31st, 2024.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt, ordinance number 2024-29?
Zillman.
A motion from John.
I'll second.
Second, that's, pre-discussion.
Just a brief explanation.
Sure. This ordinance appropriates $800 from the Gulf Pro Shop Non-Reverting Fund to the Taxes Fund. We had much higher sales with the Gulf Pro Shop than we budgeted for this year, although we mentioned it in the tax line, so we have to pay more in sales tax. So we needed an additional $800 there. This ordinance also appropriates $221,970 from the Tiff River Fund, Riverfront Fund to the Principal on Bond Funds. We make two payments a year, and for whatever reason, we have been paying those in July and January. The amortization schedule shows June and December, so this payment will get that on track with the amortization schedule. It'll be just much cleaner for our office to have it that way, it will be paid off then when the amortization schedule says it will be paid off. And then the third and final appropriation on here is moving $1,100 from the University Heights Tiff Fund to the Principal on Bond Fund. Under that, we received our first collection of Tiff funds for the University Heights Tiff this year, and we are to pay Kirstens 90% of those funds until we have paid off the $647,000 that the conditional expenditure agreement allows. So this will be the first payment that we will make on that Tiff to Kirstens.
And that first bond that you had mentioned, that is for the cultural center?
That's the river center.
The river center.
Sorry.
This, this ordinance also, Phil passes this evening, would require your signature.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion from John in the second, but Vince, is there no further discussion, all for the vote? All in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-28, which is an ordinance, transfer appropriations for the remainder of the year ending December 31st. Could I have a motion to consider the ordinance for one reading only? So, motion from Ball.
I'll second.
Second from Chad, all in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do they have a motion to have the ordinance read in full or by title?
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
A motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
Second from Phil, all in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-28, by title.
Ordinance number 2024-28, an ordinance to transfer appropriations for the city of Jasper, Indiana, for the remainder of the year ending December 31st, 2024.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt, ordinance number 2024-28?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Vince.
Second.
Second from John. Discussion.
Just again, explanation.
Sure, typically in November, we do a year-end transfer where we make sure that each, each department isn't negative in any of their funds, that they need to move money within that, within their department they can. We only allow that once a year, unfortunately, on our end, when we were working with the police department, we were working with some new people, and there was a lot of back and forth discussion, and we, our department did not end up using the final, final transfers that they had submitted, so this just corrects the mistake that we made in our department.
So sure, we're just moving funds within the department.
And we did in November, seriously don't allow it, but need to now.
This also would require your signature.
That's correct.
We're gonna have a motion from Vince and a second from John, all in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-22. It's an ordinance authorizing establishing a policy for electronic fund transfers for the city of Jasper, Indiana. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the second reading, in full or by title only?
I'm gonna read it on the second reading, by title only.
A motion from Chad, read by title only.
I'll second.
Second from Phil. All in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-22, by title.
Ordinance number 2024-22, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, authorizing and establishing a policy for electronic fund transfers for the city of Jasper, Indiana.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Gavin.
Second.
Second from John. Further discussion?
This is the ordinance that was brought for the first reading at the last meeting, and it just allows our department to make electronic fund transfer payments. We had discussed, we're not gonna do that on every, for every vendor, but we're gonna choose a slight view and implement that process.
Any other questions? If not, I have a motion from Gavin, second from John, all in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Go ahead and make a motion for the third final reading, for the ordinance 2024-22, read by title only.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion from Ball, second from Nancy, all in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-22, by title.
Ordinance number 2024-22, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, authorizing and establishing a policy for electronic fund transfers for the city of Jasper, Indiana.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the third and final reading?
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Vince, second, second from Chad. Further discussion? There are none, all in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-24. It's an ordinance establishing specially use restricted donation fund. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the second reading, in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
A motion from Nancy, read by title only.
I'll second.
Second from Chad. All in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-24, by title.
Ordinance number 2024-24, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, establishing a special use restricted donation fund.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the second reading? A motion from Ball, second, second from Kevin. Further discussion?
Just a reminder that this was the, is an ordinance that sets up a specific fund for a specific project that has been identified and will allow us to keep those funds, and it'll be a non-reverting fund, we'll be able to turn interest on them until such time that that project is approved or ready to move forward.
And a donation has been received.
The community foundation has the money, but once this has been set up, it'll transfer it to us.
Any other questions? In case I have a motion from Ball, second from Gavin, all in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the third and final reading, in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion, I'm gonna read by title only.
A motion from Vince, read by title only.
Second.
No, it's Nancy.
A motion from Vince, second by Nancy, all in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-24, by title.
Ordinance number 2024-24, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, establishing a special use restricted donation fund.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the third and final reading? Motion from Ball.
I'll second that motion. I do have a question, though, within section three, it says the fund will cover all costs associated with later materials and equipment necessary for the construction. Whatever, what if we only got some donations and the park department hadn't covered the rest of the costs for this project?
Yeah, we build into the question.
Right, and potentially transferred into here if it has to be paid for up here, however.
I mean, if it has to donate if we're, it didn't cover it all.
I, I think that the goal was, of the donor was that it would be sort of a two, or they would, this would cover a third of the project. They were hoping to raise another third, and then perhaps the city would make, the park department would make a contribution as well, and it is built into Tom's five-year plan, the project is.
Just the way this is worded, it looks like that this fund would cover all the costs for that project, so.
It means this fund can only be used for those things.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion from Ball and second from Nancy, all in favor, some of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Go ahead and make a motion, do you have the second reading, ordinance 2024-25, read by title only, please.
A motion from Ball, read by title only.
I'll second.
City attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-25, by title.
Ordinance number 2024-25, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, vacating a platted public utility in Green Jesus, Hunter's Run Estates, Lot 1.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Nancy.
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
So, did you recall last meeting, Brad Eckler was here and showed him maps, the property in question, Hunter's. The property in question, Hunter's Run Estates, has a existing sanitary super easement. They are asking to vacate that easement and replace it with a different easement that would avoid a building addition that is planned for that.
Any other discussion? I should hide it, thank you. Do they have a motion from Nancy, second from Vince, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead and make a motion. The third and final reading, 2024-25, read by title only please. Motion from Paul.
Second.
Second from Chad. City attorney, please read 2024-25 by title.
Ordinance number 2024-25. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, vacating platted public utility and drainage easement, Hunter's Run Estates, Lot 1.
Okay. I did vote if it mattered.
I don't think, I don't think you had a, you didn't ask to get a call for everybody.
Is everybody okay with just doing this by title only? I'll call for, I'll call for a vote officially, sorry.
Maybe we should read this one.
All right, well, we've got a motion to read it by title only. All, Chad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has to be unanimous. And she has read it, so I take that. Okay, could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the third and final reading? Paul.
I'll second.
Second from Vince. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a big paper. Next is ordinance number 2024-26. Mike, you're, we'll get up next.
Okay.
They're very patient. Do they have a motion to read the ordinance in the second reading in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
Do they have a motion from Vince, read by title only?
I'll second.
Second from Chad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-26 by title.
Ordinance number 2024-26. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, amending the rules and regulations for the operation of a natural gas system owned by the city of Jasper, Indiana, and fixing schedule of revised rates and charges for the sale of gas by the Jasper Municipal Gas Utility.
Do they have a motion to approve the ordinance in the second reading? Motion for Paul.
I'll second that motion.
Second from Nancy. Further discussion?
So, just as a reminder, this is an ordinance amendment that adds language to the gas rate ordinance that specifies that the Hooterville gas extension fees ended in November of 2024.
Any other discussion? Do they have a motion for Paul and a second from Nancy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead and make a motion to read 2024-26 in the third and final reading by title only. Motion for Paul.
I'll second that.
Second from Nancy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-26 by title.
Ordinance number 2024-26. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, amending the rules and regulations for the operation of a natural gas system owned by the city of Jasper, Indiana, fixing the schedule of revised rates and charges, sale of gas by the Jasper Municipal Gas Utility.
Do they have a motion to approve the ordinance in the third and final reading?
So moved.
Motion from Chad.
I'll second.
Second from Vince. Any other discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is the regional wellness center, update discussion. So I think today it's, most recent information that we had from the meetings with timeline. The only thing that might add to that is that we're going to target in the timeline, a managed services agreement. Sometime in January, February, I haven't typed that. Between the YMCA and the city of Jasper. So that is something that's got to be done. Otherwise, I think the dates of the year are pretty good. We continue to horse down the path. Mike, do you want to comment on fundraising?
Yeah. You guys, sorry, I didn't give these ahead.
Sure.
Those are, they're already obsolete because before I left, I got a couple more donations in. But I think it shows great progress and great support that we've seen from the community. Over thirteen million dollars pledged. Which is, which is pretty phenomenal, I think.
That's written pledges.
That's written, yeah. We only count if we have a signed pledge form in hand. You know, several others sent checks into mail, we're considering it, we're going to do something. But if we don't have that signed pledge form in hand, and they're not on this list. Over 1.5 million have been received to date, so some of the donors are already paying. We have a brokerage account set up with Springs Valley Bank. Hence, you see the odd numbers of 92 cents or whatever in there. Some people are gifting stocks. So when we receive a gift of 20 shares of Apple stock, Springs Valley Bank sells that right away and it's converted into cash. The DuBois County Community Foundation has agreed to set up and fund $250,000 of an endowment. That was kind of recent news, they're going to start funding that this year. You know, Mayor has been a part of most of these fundraising meetings and heard a lot of really good stories from some of the people, organizations that have donated. We've had a couple people on this list that have started as a pretty hard no. And as we've got on, you know, some, been working at this for over a year and a half and some of them we've engaged for over a year and a half. But a couple things that kind of hit me in the fundraising. One, one of the coolest ones that we received was from HNI. And that was almost a year ago, shortly after HNI and Kimball kind of came to their agreement. HNI is headquartered in Muscatine, Iowa. There is a YMCA in Muscatine, Iowa. So the HNI leadership had very good dealings, relations, partnership with the Y in Iowa and saw the real benefit of, you know, if our folks are traveling to Jasper, it should be nice if they had a place to come and vice versa. Some of the Jasper-based staff traveled to Iowa, it'd be nice for them to have a place to come as well. So one of the real strengths of the YMCA is that reciprocity agreement. Where you, if you're a member of one Y, you're a member of all Ys. As we talked to Deaconess and Memorial, so Jasper Memorial and Gibson County are going to be part of the Deaconess region. So there's a new Y being built in Princeton, going to open in February. So we already began talking about that same type of agreement. How do we, you know, make their employees welcome, accessible at both Ys? How do we maybe partner together on future things to make it beneficial for Memorial Hospital, Gibson County Hospital employees and things like that? So really, you know, we talked about the regional wellness center and really as we talked to some of these especially larger companies, that regionality is really something that is really excited, exciting for them to be a part of. So, you know, I think, I feel pretty positive that that fundraising number is going to continue to grow. We had a couple really, really good meetings this week. A lot of people, like I said, kind of sorting things out at the end of the year, but still working through it, still progressing on, have our volunteers out, canvassing the community and, you know, talking to people about the project. So it feels like every step that we make, no matter how small, the approval, the news, the updated designs, things like that, every step of the way, it kind of gets people more excited about the project.
Other comments? I know we have a working group that's, that's working through with the Hefner Associates and Crest Construction and working on really the feasibility, the design, to make sure that we hit phases. Looking at the site. Actually, I have it in here, really, we have the Phase 1 site preparation, that build operating transfer agreement. So we're looking at that in the timeline of March. The site prep is a big deal. This, this, that was a big part of the increased cost of going to this, this particular space. The other site had been an existing facility. This is a new facility altogether, new infrastructure.
It's also exciting with the site plan to talk about how that site is going to affect the high school and also the Parklands. So how, how do we truly, truly tie those three entities together and make things accessible going across all ways? And how we make accessibility, safe coming into the Parklands and the new regional wellness center and things like that? So it's been a kind of an eye-opening experience and we spent quite a bit of time trying to map out how that's all going to work and how the people are going to be able to flow from one facility to the next.
Mayor, what was the area on the timeline that you said when you started this that we should add to that timeline?
It was January, February for the managed services arena. Also in that January timeframe, there will be the financial.
We have a meeting scheduled for January 7th to walk through the Baker-Tilly report that you all have a copy of, to make sure that we have our questions answered so that we can then bring all of that information to you all and answer any questions that you have about it. And hoping that we can get all of that wrapped up in January.
And when you meet with Baker-Tilly for that, is that the whole design team meeting with them?
No.
That'll probably be internally, Mayor, myself, Kirsten, Tom.
Probably the finance team that's involved in this.
The working group at the last meeting, or well, second last meeting, I can't remember, identified the need to create a kind of a subgroup of finance group to look at the numbers.
At this point in time though, pretty optimistic about at least the support we're getting from the community and working to, that fundraising. Of course, they're ready to put out the last month, so there's another 5 million toward it. We'll be in a much better position than the March timeframe. Infrastructure and footprint, operating transfer. Then, the final design is not until September?
Oh, August, September.
August, September. Phase 2.
Mike, I have a question about the foundation endowment that's being set up. Will that, will those funds go to the YMCA or to the city for maintenance?
Yeah, we haven't seen the written agreement yet, but my understanding is that will come to the city. It won't necessarily be a grant making, but it'll be the, whatever the foundation, the 3% that the foundation pays on annual budget will come to the city.
To the city.
For the city to determine how that's used.
Annual payment?
Yes.
And then, wasn't there a site, I just want to say like core samples and things like that done?
It's underway.
It's underway now. So we don't have the results of that yet?
That's right. And I don't know that. We're having a meeting tomorrow, actually, the working group, so on May 11th.
Hopefully.
And then another question about the donations. Do any of them, you said the 13 million was letter in hand, correct? Do any of them have stipulations to the building?
As far as.
As far as like if there's a pool or if there's a.
No, not really. The, probably the biggest note that people put on there is they'll, they'll start paying when the budget and things are finalized and things are ready to go. Even estimate that approximately $6 million is kind of sitting, waiting, ready to go for, they say contract signing. Now that's, you know, we've signed a couple contracts already, we'll sign until we get the final design. But I feel like once that final design and that final number, budget, whatever it's going to be for that project is set, then I think that's going to really release a lot.
I would say that, if I was interpreting that, I would say the final BOT agreement would be the contract signing.
Is there any other questions you might have on the regional wellness center at this time?
At the April public hearing, would that be at the council meeting, would there be a public hearing?
Yes.
Well, this memo says the next, next item to be completed is the engineering and design contract. So that's a $2.25 million obligation, is that? I know there's a little action for us to take tonight. Is that RDC taking that or, how was this?
For Public Works and Safety.
Okay.
That is, those are help funds that we identified.
Specific to this project.
That's correct.
But that's not 2.1 million?
No, no, that's Phase 1 of the engineering, which is $820,000. The total package, the, the next phase for engineering would be the balance of that.
The balance of those funds would come from where?
Multiple sources. Food and beverage, we've identified some tip from the central area tip and, I'm saying.
Depending on the year, I think our total is in career.
I think there was a possibility.
Because food and beverage, not the 2.1, 2.2 million minus the 800,000?
Yes.
Yes.
So the health grant was for $1.06 million. And those funds have to be under contract by the end of this year and spent by the end of 2026. It was identified to use those funds for the regional wellness center. And we used $220,000 to pay for the property from the school. And we have AHR and $13,000 remaining. And that is the fund source that has been identified for Phase 1 of the contract.
Questions? It's a, I know it's slow going and getting the information. I think we've got a good team that's assembling. I think would be a great project to keep behind. Try to keep it as informed as we can as we go. So I'd like to have the final myself, you know. We're just not there yet.
You mean the final dollar amount or the design?
I would say though, with the report from Baker-Tilly, we are, I'd say a giant step further walking. I think that has a lot of good information in it. I'm excited to have that walkthrough and then be able to share that with you.
Paul, you wouldn't mind sharing after the meetings some of the information? Certainly appreciate that. I think communications from here now is really vital, so.
Good.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And how often does the team meet?
Every, every Thursday. We didn't meet last week.
So, let it out.
And everyone's ready to go for that, so.
That'd be great to just have a couple paragraphs after each of those meetings, I agree with you.
Mike, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate the work, keep going, we're not there yet. Yep. Next item on the agenda is appointments. Showing here that this requires counsel approval. Reading through them, we have Adam Offer. Phil, do you want to read through these, this council?
Sure, Adam Offer, we talked to him, Utilities Service Board, John Trader, again with Redeval Commission, myself, Redeval Commission. Vince has accepted the solid waste management, but we're going to work on what we're comfortable with.
Do I have a motion to accept this slate of the ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Nancy?
I'll second that.
Second from Phil. Any discussion?
Just, just a reminder that you guys all have to sign off on those appointments too, so.
And they have to stay after this, be sworn in.
That's right, yes, you didn't have to stay after to be sworn in.
Make your bed, Tom.
I have a motion from Nancy, second from Phil, all in favor, should we be saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an application for a gas license. This is for Phil Mindy.
Yep. Jordan Spencer. We're having right machine there.
I'm going to read that, there it is. Out of order.
You wouldn't let me do it.
No, it's like, there's another Phil Mindy? Sorry about that. Application for gas contractor's license, this is Jordan Spencer. I think you had a chance to review, if I get a copy of that.
And interesting, they included the test this time, I don't think we've ever had that.
Oh, you haven't?
Do I have a motion to approve Jordan Spencer?
I'll make a motion to approve Jordan Spencer with 86% correct on gas license application.
Motion for Paul?
I'll second that.
Second from Nancy, any further discussion?
Just out of curiosity, looking over the tests, is it the same test given every time? I don't know why you asked that one.
I do, I do think it's the same test given every time.
I thought we had to have it passed.
I did find out if it was open book or not.
I, I don't know the answer to that either.
I hope not, we've never had one.
Okay, motion from Paul, second, these are three. So all in favor, should we be saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no answer. Then, we now have a conflict of interest disclosure statement. This is from Mr. Phil Mindy.
This one?
Phil Mindy is owner of Wendy Outdoor Sports, and the Park Department has purchased some basketballs from them, so we felt that it was necessary to get one of these in that and file it.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll open it.
Reluctantly.
John made a motion and Vince seconded, any further discussion?
Does it have to be announced? I suppose I have to say it.
You should have said it. All in favor, should we be saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is, or who else?
Mayor, I just have this to share, I came across this article, I think it was in the Honeyberg paper today, about a musician who penned a song about Santa Claus, but in it, it says that, about writing the song, he wondered about writing a song that included his now hometown and favorite southern Indiana town, Jasper, and he thought about Santa making his trip from the starting point of Jasper, symbolizing the North Pole, in his sleigh with reindeer and then heading down to Santa Claus, Indiana. So I thought it was kind of cute, so if you want to like Google this guy, Gary Schottmeyer's, I mean, you can hear the song on what, however you find him. I thought it was kind of a cute little article and how he mentioned Jasper, and obviously he's living here now. I just wanted to share that in the spirit of the Christmas season.
Thank you, Nancy. There's no other business other than retain motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?
Make the motion from Paul.
Second.
Second from Vince. Further discussion? Merry Christmas or is it Merry Gras? All in favor, should we be saying aye?
Aye.
Any adjournments?